Sorry guys, bad DJ. John better than I do.
I'd rather have a bad DJ or a bad break.
Do you want to sit in her bedroom? From Pennsylvania?
Right.
Okay.
Ask me who I don't know. I think we're here to be the next designated Secretary of Attorney.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very great.
Well, that's all, Laura. This is May, Tuesday, February the fourteenth, the day before Saint Valentine Day.
Thirteen.
And also they had a little rant. So.
Seventeen.
Is there anybody who would like to address the closed session we're going to go into in a moment?
Mr. Mayor, we have men. We don't mind, I'd like to just receive a roll call real quick, please.
Tell us what the verdict is.
Uh, I mean, did you roll call real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Alright.
Council, agency, authority member Taylor?
Here.
Council, agency, authority member Torres?
Here.
Council, agency, authority member Van?
Here.
Mayor pro temp, I share Kristen Warren?
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Chauvin?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you're up. There you go, people.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have several items on tonight's closed session. The first is conference with legal counsel in this litigation. Home case, Tennessee Residents Association versus Stanton. And we have conference with real property negotiator for the properties listed in the agenda. And we have conference with legal counsel in this litigation, significant exposure litigation, number of potential cases this one. And that is all.
Okay, we are now recessing to closed session. Okay, we just came out of recess, uh, we have some.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, your time is up.
Alright, we're back in our session this time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council, agency, authority member Taylor?
Here.
Council, agency, authority member Torres?
Here.
Council, agency, authority member Van?
Here.
Mayor pro temp, I share Kristen Warren?
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Chauvin?
Here. Are you Commissioner of Parks with the County of Orange, which you lead as?
Oh, I'm also a Commissioner.
Okay. Mr. Chauvin, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Erica Donald, Council of Public Affairs. Good to see you guys again. It's been a couple months since we've done this. The legislature's been dark for a lot of that, uh, but we're back at full speed in Sacramento. So if you're a DPO and rep update. Legislature reconvene January fourth after the two session. So after this year, all bills that do not pass, um, get, and then we'll reset. The first next year all over again. There were several hundred bills that were holdovers from last year that they want to change. Too much dedicated to those bills getting out of their first house. Uh, and then in the parallel path, legislatures all, legislators also have the ability to introduce new bills until February sixteenth. So it says seven hundred, but just to state that change, about eight hundred bills have been introduced so far since January third. Brand new bills, I should say. Um, and by February sixteenth, this Friday, on the deadline, there's going to be between one thousand and fourteen hundred additional bills introduced in the next three days. So mad, mad. I think around twenty-two hundred bills, uh, second year, two year session. To be combined with the holdover bills from last year. Um, about one-third of those eight hundred bills are what we call spot bills or intent bills. So they're very short bills that are just placeholders and don't really do anything. Uh, so if they passed, nothing would happen. So it's just, they spot in line and then they will amend substantive language into them at a different date. It's just to get that vehicle to. Of the fourteen hundred that will be introduced in the next three days, probably about half of them will be spot bills. And the next month, the month of half, though, it's substantive language. Um, probably the most impactful thing to happen in the last, uh, in the last month has been the governor's January budget proposal. Sure, all seen, the numbers, heard about it. It'll take a quick second, about thirty-eight billion dollar deficit. Last year was around thirty-two billion dollar deficit in a day. It's a little confusing, uh, because of, uh, some factors we'll talk about in a second, but. It's important to note that the Legislative Analyst Office, which is a non-partisan, uh, think tank of the legislature. Really puts that number a lot higher than the governor assuming these budgets. They're working off different assumptions. But I will say that this does kick off a, uh, a very long year of negotiations for budget. There's still a lot of time for that to turn around. But in the meantime, all budget needs to be balanced every year. So the governor has rolled out his plan to address that thirty-eight billion dollar deficit. And it's quite creative, as it, just like it was last year. So he's proposing to utilize about fourteen billion dollars in our reserve accounts to help smooth out that thirty-eight billion. As well as eight point five in straight cuts from previous years. Five point seven in borrowing, uh, through other revenue sources that the state has access to. Five point one billion in delays. So what that means is delays to future dates, so they have a hard date of when that money will be due. Not to be confused with two point one billion in referrals, which is a delay without a date, if that makes sense. It's a open-ended delay of, we're not going to fund that right now, but we're still committed to it. And three point four billion in shifts between accounts borrowing from other accounts and free announced cash reduction from other accounts of the state. Got all that up, that gets you to about that thirty-eight billion dollar number. Obviously, that's going to change. Timeline wise, February till now, uh, sorry, excuse me, down till, okay, budget, uh, we've deliberated with the legislature. A device will be very interesting this year. That will be another budget called by the governor of being a lot more accurate in terms of what our revenues are going to look like. Based on the April. Budget act will be passed by the legislature by June fifteenth, but then signed into law by July first. As you know, in the last couple of years, that is really deadlines. They have to do it constitutionally in order to remain A. Real work will be done in July and August, we anticipate again, uh, details based on sales tax receipts. Other considerations in context, we're talking about bond proposals. Uh, we'll talk about a little bit later, but there are free bond proposals being debated right now. I say that because if the budget deficit rises, bond proposals tend to rise to the top, have ways to combat some of that. For example, in big surplus years, it's not really common to have bonds, you can find it at a general fund. April sales, April tax receipts could have a more positive outcome, like I said. But we're really still suffering from the delay in sales tax from last year because of the storms and delayed all waiting in November in terms of collections. A lot of the high earners in California wait to very end to pay their taxes. And then strong reserve accounts, um, in the last several years, we've been very diligent, about thirty million away. It's time to come due now, like I said, that fourteen billion, taking out rainy day funds and taking out of the service, help smooth that over. But we're in a really strong savings position to move into that. Anticipating legislation and legislative issues, homelessness, behavioral health will continue to be a hot topic. Obviously, we know about Prop one on the, uh, on the ballot, thinking it's already hit the homes and our mailboxes. That will be continuing to be a priority as well as other legislation that's already come, introduced to address homelessness. Impact fees seems to be a theme this year that housing advocates are looking at. Our understanding for talking to housing advocates is that they think they have what they need for future streamlining wise. There's been a streamlined bill every year for the past five years, right? In terms of SB nine, SB four, three, SB thirty-five. Housing advocates are, are just about done with streamlining. They think they have everything they need out of local governments to be able to streamline housing code. Now they're looking at the costs. One of the factors of cost could be impact fees that we're hearing. It could be, uh, protection of impact fees, implementation of impact fees. Or probably more accurately, a transparency upfront on impact fees guaranteed by the local government, how much it's going to cost. Theft prevention, um, which kind of ties into Prop forty-seven reform, has been all the rage right now in the news. I'm sure you're aware, it's struggling here locally. Two schools of thought right now that are key, uh, the governor, uh, really wants to do this non-constitutionally. Which means he wants to do policy initiatives that do not touch Prop forty-seven, or kind of work around bridges. Like new penalties for theft, increasing local enforcement tools, aggregating the theft, theft amounts on local offenses. Doing some of the auto and burglary stuff as well. Legislative proposals right now are very much constitutional fixes. They really want to go into Prop forty-seven that the voters ask, maybe change some specific things in that bill. That would have to go back to the local people in order, because people are not on Prop forty-seven first time. So the legislature is very keen on going back to the voters and asking them for some amendments to Prop forty-seven. Right? Yes, sir.
On the statewide bonds, are they similar to the beauty bonds, uh, that you're available?
Uh, they're general obligation bonds. They're available to the state to spend. So depending, not the cities. So depending on what's in the bonds, a lot of those bonds reauthorize existing programs that have run out of money. So especially the private bond and the housing bond will have tranches of money in there that give money to state agencies, then grant out to state clients. Uh, we're bonding it as a, as a government, for borrowing. Fentanyl overdose will also be an issue this year. There hasn't been any major legislation on that, but with our, a new committee that was created, I expect there to be some, some legislation on fentanyl overdose that hopefully gets my lawyers support, which is struggling with last time. On the supply value issues, uh, I'm not going to talk about the Taxpayer Protection Act, or AC thirteen, AC one. We've talked about that enough, no changes there, but we're all on the ballot in November. But a couple updates on the next three, California Department of Labor Act requests. That has not qualified for the ballot yet, but it is still to be, uh, collecting signatures paid, so they have a totally role to collect signatures. It's a very, it's very expensive to qualify for the ballot. They need about five hundred fifty thousand signatures, but there's been no update on how, how well they're doing. Or how much money they have, I guess the county town's going to be able to do it, so we're kind of in a wait-and-see pattern there. Prop forty-seven reforms is gaining a lot of steam as a citizens initiative, so the legislature's working on theirs. There's a citizens initiative that is gaining steam, getting money behind it to qualify to go in and then Prop forty-seven as well. So we could see some, getting Prop forty-seven reports. And the local rent control technically has gathered enough signatures to qualify for the ballot, but now it just needs proposition number by the Secretary of State or process at this point. But it's very easy to become, uh, valuable, which gives the local government the right to. Uh, and then we talked about the bonds, uh, through the vote for the mayor, but there are three competing bonds right now. And we're all going to have to, uh, take a lot of care from the dollar amounts that they currently have in print. To not have that much passing on all of those. Likely that they all could pass all three, but I don't know what the voters are going to think about three bonds after voting for the bond, they march on the ballot. So there's some discussions to be had there this year with the legislature. Um, I am excited to talk about AB two zero three four for a little bit. This is a bill by Assemblymember Rodriguez that is going to help us with the SB three fifty-seven from Senate debate issue. When it comes to, uh, people who's excite for ordering with the Constitution. The city is struggling with that. I, I commend your city staff. Stanton was one of the, the first cities to come forward this year, earlier this, I'm sorry, last year. Who complained about the impact of SB three fifty-seven on institution. Um, and so Stanton's one of the first to go to cities, first to develop a coalition. California cities, San Diego, Oakland, Long Beach, a lot of cities up and down the state, um, to be complaining about this. Our case, uh, and the result is this bill from Assemblymember Rodriguez that tries to put some guardrails back into the process for SB three fifty-seven. Specifically, um, gives offices the ability to cite for it again, like they were a couple of years ago, as long as there's a set of conditions. That they have to meet in order to cite for it. They can, they are not allowed to use clothing as an example of something that would imply that an individual.
Or a lack of clothing?
Sorry?
Or a lack of clothing.
Correct, that is not an eligible, uh, assumption. Uh, does not apply to individuals under eighteen. There's an assumption there that that is a, a trafficked individual, um, there's a separate process for, uh, getting them help they need through county law versus their. And then defining certain words in law for this section, such as lawyer in public place, that's going to really help. I, I think help these officers with enforcement tools, uh, to be able to cite for ordering with the intent of the, the Constitution. So should this go well this year, uh, you know, Stanton's already, there's already a lot of support since the city. For you guys to consider. I expect Stanton to be front and center along with the other cities I mentioned, in terms of case studies and questions being asked. Hope any legislators will be supportive. Should it pass, uh, we're looking at a January one, twenty twenty-five, uh, effective date. Yes, sir.
Have you, have you talked to Rodriguez?
Uh, yeah, have you talked to his staff about it?
I also suggest.
Sure.
That he is having difficulty, uh, to mayor or not. I mean, well, it's simple, if he had a clause in there, if the college people about the all-encompassing act for everybody. Maybe a people were to be allowing it to be applied as written to cities that are under a short population that have a state highway.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good, that, that could be a really good fallback if it goes, if it doesn't go well, it can start getting narrow, narrow, narrow to, to not apply statewide, but instead would apply in communities like this.
Right, and it only affects, uh, smaller cities that do have a, like, a rate for the night.
Yeah. Uh, leadership changes, we, we anticipated this and projected it, but it has officially happened. Senator Conroy, uh, the OPR area is now the U.S. pro temp. What's interesting, a couple of things are interesting about this, but he's termed out in twenty twenty-six. So it was a very interesting switch, uh, leadership wise, and so a very temporary position for him, so he's got two years to make his stamp. But he hit the ground swinging, uh, running, I should say, with his city, uh, chairmanships, uh, which is. Major covenant power of the pro temp, it's a decide who's on what committee, who chairs what committee. So he actually flipped Senator Scott Weiner and Senator Nancy Skinner, which was interesting. So Nancy Skinner was the housing chair, uh, sorry, excuse me, budget chair, now she's the housing chair. Senator Weiner was the housing chair, is now budget chair. You don't expect a ton of difference between those two cities, the whole very progressive legislators from Bay Area. I'm not entirely certain there's going to be major, uh, policy changes. But still a statement nonetheless, that he swapped them, they're both very much important legislators. Um, and it kind of interesting, at least to politicals like myself, um, he did decide to split up the Senate Governments and Finance Committee to two committees. So prior to redevelopment, it was two committees, that's redevelopment, blending that government into, in tax, the revenue taxation so, so clearly. They combined those committees, made it a lot easier. But now he's proposing to split them again, Senate Local Government and Senate Revenue and Tax, uh, with the associated chairs. Senator DeRosa's out of the LA area, um, so that's a, that's a, I think that's a good number to add on up on the local government committee to be close to home, urban, very much a big city kind of, uh, legislator as opposed to a rural, uh, local government chair. Uh, and then Senate Revenue and Taxation, Senator Grazer's been all over Revenue and Taxation his entire time in the legislature. He's also turned out, I should say, uh, so that's an interesting chairmanship.
Would be a good idea for us to get a holding for the housing chair, um, Nancy.
Yeah.
About what we're doing.
Yeah.
And also, uh, probably, uh, the cause of, you know, that why it's usually have started back in the middle of this, uh, this, uh, this all the habit. I think that if we can hit the era of, uh.
I agree, I agree. I think there's a, uh, it's very possible that the Rodriguez bill goes through a committee at some point.
I, I think the fact that, that she's wanted to, uh, put on work with them.
Yep.
Related to that, that would be very helpful.
I agree. Uh, switching gears to federal, uh, you saw a very similar slide of this in October, uh, and the reason is not much has changed. But we are almost six months without a full year of federal budget at this point, uh, which is kind of impressive, not a record, but kind of impressive. So that March first is when the continued resolution, uh, those two, it's about three weeks from now, I think two. It's kind of a bifurcated one, there's March eighth as well, it's kind of half, half of the federal government. Uh, the good news is that, uh, Democrats and Republicans in both houses has, have agreed on a top-line spending amount, uh, which is always the first step in the process. So that was really good, uh, good news, however, need to see the, no text pretty soon. We're going to be voting on it by March first and March eighth. We're probably in the, in the seven to ten days where, you know, that we need to see no text, otherwise we're looking at another continued resolution. The reason that matters, I should say, that roadblocks are still Ukraine and Israeli aid that people cannot agree on. As well as the typical policy riders you see in every appropriations bill, where every legislator is asking for something else, uh, as a condition for their vote. But the reason that's important is because that is directly tying up our community project funding, our earmark, that we are currently slated to receive through Commerce and Credit in the T. For the compensation, the equalization. So the reason we care about this is because once that's done, this becomes law, a hundred million dollars becomes in excess. I should say, on that note, in the second this bill is signed into law, we expect next year's earmark round to open probably a week later. So we are working with staff coming up with that list of projects, but it's going to be a very tight turnaround. I expect mid, mid-March as a supplemental time for next year's earmarks. Uh, switching gears lastly to the grants update, um, you've seen a lot of these individually, but we've had some, uh, some updates since being here last, just wanted to update you on. Very recently, uh, we worked with your staff to submit a CDVG grant to the county of Orange. As a non-entitled one, city, you don't get direct funding, but you're able to apply for it in county, competitive nature. So we were able to get four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that, which is good news for upgrades to the, uh, City Center and Senior Center. And then our OCTA complete grant, complete streets grants program for Orangewood Avenue. There's three categories there, there's highly recommended, recommended and not recommended. So we ended up in recommended category, right in the middle. OCTA does not have enough money to fund everyone in the recommended category, but they are pushing on those projects to stack their considerations. We have another bite, we do not get the OCTA money, but we do have another bite at the apple on the SCAC side. Could be at least sometime in July. Right. Um, we did hear back from Department of Transportation on our saved streets for all brand of a hundred sixty thousand for our action, uh, Vision Zero action plans, that's good news. And then we were unsuccessful in two random water conservation funds, uh, and come back since, uh, been here last, for tennis courts and Smash Men. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to show it's, I think, uh, recently, I know OCAG is dead or kind of, I suppose, uh, no one.
I've heard of the OCAG, not SCAG, that would surprise me.
Yeah. They're, they're happening.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thanks. Yeah. Somewhere on, on the news are, uh, popular with some, uh, care court. Um, so Prop one's, it, it's complicated, um, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't characterize it necessarily as sending more money to care per, but it is definitely an adjacent program that, that is going to have a lot of peer ties. I would say it's complementary, I think that's probably a better way to say that. Uh, I, I get I'm not an expert on, uh, mental health rehabilitation by any stretch, but I think I would call it complementary to care per.
Tell, fair comment. You know, um, the problem with that is, um, is that. If the state ends up getting money for that, to do that program, we're upset. Because if they did, we had seen some of the money, help, help them out. And we're not gaining, and the only way we get it is if they get it to us correctly. You know, by, it's super difficult for us to, uh, it's very unfortunate. So my personal position, and I'm sure that most of my old mayors are opposing that, that particular reason. We're not going to see a penny of that, it also takes with liability to, uh, you.
Yeah, true, we're us.
Anybody else? Will you get back to, uh, Hannah on those things right?
Sure.
Okay. Is there one in the audience who would like to comment on the report? We have no public hearings, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business. This time, anybody would like to address the city council, okay, I have a good, I'm, oh yeah. We have item Z two G. Is there anybody that would like to, the audience, or any of the correspondents, comment on our.
We've received no written comment, and I do not have any requests to speak at this time.
Council, any? Open the calendar, thanks.
Come on, babe. Uh, anybody opposed? Alright, now we'll move on to, um, open hearings, knowing that there's other bills. At this time, anybody that would like to address the city council with any, and within our subject jurisdiction, knowing that we do not take any action on it. Uh, you have an opportunity to address the council.
We don't have any requests to speak. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council this evening? Sir? Uh, come up to the microphone, please. And we just thought that you speak, or maybe you do have three minutes, or, maybe you.
Do you, uh, could you, can you, can you go through that mic? Over to that mic? Or you go through that mic? Oh.
Yes.
No, what?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, Stanton. You know, I'm running this time.
So, so let's come out of this, uh. You can come out of the closing. If you can see, clear, come on around, come on up. That way you got our full attention. I have, uh, about five, six sessions here. Three of them are related to trafficking, and I understand this gentleman I should talk to. But I also wanted to present an offer and a bit of knowledge about, uh, NFL. As a program called Grassroots Society, Grassroots Foundation. And what they do is that if you build them, uh, the regulation, NFL football field, and the works and the plannings. You get a grant from them for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All I want to see is this done once, and somebody else can take over where I left off. And I understand that there is a beautiful park down here, Stanton, that I go to just to get some fresh air. That the homes are trashing, so bad. And, uh, the NFL, I got a call, the Charger, Piera. She asked him to, maybe he can be here at our next meeting? Nope. If your thoughts are there, fine. And if you want to say, to get the whole plant, okay, we can do that. They do have a program with NFL, have to do a land lease. Okay, if we can rent the, uh, land under a high hedge, whatever, to build the legal-sized NFL stadium. That the high school kid, the grandkid, the boys and girls club across the street. Will be the main receiver of the program. They only do this if you have the boys and girls club that is involved in. And it's not going to cost two hundred and fifty thousand to build a lease, uh, regulation football field. But you use the maintenance year after year to maintain it. And maybe we can get a land lease, I don't know, it's still in the middle, it's in. And maybe we can get a land lease, I don't know, it's still in the middle, it's in the infancy. If I can, if you're okay, SN, or, uh, pursue this, we'll get more. Uh, we appreciate it, and thank you for your time. If I could tell you, you charging the streets, traffic, okay, maybe we can come.
Also, uh, Zenia, OBD, I'm the ender, you probably want to talk to her, can she show you about any services? She would be a good contact. Close hand up. I agree. You know, one of the problems that we have is that, uh, most of the open areas are owned by Southern California Edison, so working with those two, we'll see what we can do, okay? Um, also, um, you know, that deal can be used for other things besides football games, which is a great idea. So, thank you for coming.
Maybe, uh, uh, paperball, as we explore nowadays, that there's a lot of news about people living, about paperballs.
Now, you know Norm Ross, the Norm Ross one over here? The park right over here, by the...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that's being developed into a giant city park, like, um, who we have on this. So, I'm texting.
Yeah, okay.
The park right over here, across from the community garden, behind our park, is being developed into a new city park, similar to what we have over there at West. So, I'm gonna make you a suggestion, to go with these two votes, to see if we can't work something out with Southern California Edison.
All right.
How's that? Very good, okay, great. Now, Heather, can you, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this time? I'll go ahead and close public hearings. We have no room communications. Okay, this is, uh, Mayor, Chairman, Council, agency, initiative business. Mayor reports, Council, authority, announcements. Okay.
Um, Orange County, mosquito and vector control district has an open house this Thursday at one thirty two p.m. And they have a burger, have a burger, we thought they'd be there. And a free burger, and, uh, chicken, Seattle, and all of those things. And it's in Garden Road, very close. Okay, um, Alex, do you, someone working on the vector control, they wanted to know, do you have a date set for, under the talking?
We met with her actually last, uh, afternoon, so she was suggesting some kind of, uh, brand.
Add one.
So, um, uh, Mayor and I had the great pleasure, um, attending the opening ceremony for the UBSA, which stands for University, um, sorry, Union of Hidden Students, that festival, which happens at that, um, past several years. Wonderful to see, uh, our city represented in that, uh, that festival, and to see all the amazing ones that university students are doing. Thank you, Mayor, for having me on that, and I believe we also presented a city college.
And I want to personally thank Alice, as you know, Alice is part of the criminal, she would say, and take care of the interpretation. She did a really good job representing the city, so thank you for that. Okay, I have an announcement, John, stand up. I'm not embarrassing. We don't have a lot of people over the years that I can think of, uh, that represent our city on countywide commissions. And I'm very pleased to let you know that the board supervisors, uh, last week, uh, unanimously approved John Warren to be, uh, representative on the OC Park, Trails, Harbor Beaches, Port Prime Lake, and Poplar Park as a commissioner. So, congratulations, John.
Being my student, I would also add, uh, this is, I listened to the previous, uh, recording from the last meeting, so that's also in there as well. I can't honestly say too much yet, because I haven't even met with the staff yet. So, I know there's parks out there, and I can't wait to explore them. But, thank you.
Thanks, man. Okay, hey, uh, we do have, uh, I think February twenty-third is the due date for a movement, uh, distinction. Would you like to read a little quick comment on that, please? Thank you. And you can talk about it tomorrow, where you're at. And don't forget, Alice is, uh, together, thank you, Alice.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's your big.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are, uh, as you mentioned, Mayor, accepting applications still for the movement distinction program. And we will be with, uh, John's mayor, Proton Warren, and the select, uh, with the community, select winner. Uh, a number of applications that are accepted, uh, through the twenty second. We hope to honor them and continue on the, um, March call. Currently, for the citizens' academy, we're still marching the program. We have a few applications, and we'll report back if we have enough to, uh, hold across this session. Otherwise, we'll try during the call. And then our big one for tomorrow, our Love Stanton Theater for City, starting at nine a.m., we have a whole room, uh, expected about two hundred and twenty-four. And a wonderful program in video segments that form live about where is the today's and where we're going. And a delicious breakfast for everyone. I just say everything.
Thank you. I know that that was, uh, a lot of work, um, with the staff, and that everybody had a role to play, uh, especially our sheriff's department and fire department, they get their scripts really well, because the director was Mr. Wren, so that worked out really well. Cecil being Wren, anyway, um, I think everybody's gonna enjoy it. You know, it's much better than listen to us talk, is to watch the video. So I think it'll be very, um, inviting and moving, I'll be, I haven't seen it yet.
There is a series of five different...
Everybody should bring their dates, by the way.
By the way, one of you will be receiving...
We're, we're, we're subscribed.
One of the council members will be receiving the Academy Awards, so we'll say how we're doing. All right, so that's gonna be exciting, uh, tomorrow. All right, we're now at, uh, the inaugural future meeting, which is, uh, the state council.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no, uh, comments.
And extending the...
Nothing that we mean, thank you.
And now, I was at the pleasure of being at the OCFA operations meeting, where, um, Chief Domon gave a great presentation on the emergency resource center and the people that we have, the people that we send out all over the country. And it was about an hour and a half, so you're under two minutes, uh, okay, gee, I'm just kidding.
Did Capitol tell you to say that?
No, you did a great job. Um, in fact, um, I have a much better understanding of the personnel that we have involved in, and I think that, I think that we're in good hands, and knowing that you run that indirectly makes me feel even better, so thank you, thank you, sir.
So, uh, good evening, honorable Mayor, council members, uh, city staff, and citizens of Stanton. It's my pleasure to provide you with the, uh, OCFA operational update for, uh, January of twenty twenty-four. Um, last month, uh, the OCFA responded to a total of three hundred and ninety-seven incidents within the, uh, city limits, um, during the month. Of those responses, set... Twelve of those were fire-related, three hundred and fifty-six were EMS or rescue-related, and twenty-nine were hazardous materials or service calls. Um, as officially, OCFA responded to a total of fifty-four incidents within the unincorporated area of Orange County, serviced by Fire Station Four Six here in City Stanton. For those fifty-four incidents, one of those was fire-related, forty-seven were EMS rescue-related, and six were hazardous materials. Um, during the month, there was, uh, one significant incident that required, uh, required additional, um, significant augmenting of resources beyond just the initial response. And that was for a fire in a storm drain that was reported, um, on Monday, um, evening of Monday, January fifteenth, at approximately, uh, midnight. Um, OCFA dispatch center received, uh, multiple nine-one-one recall, uh, reports of, uh, black smoke coming from the storm drains, uh, located near eighty-four thirty-two Telle Avenue. Um, first rate, uh, engine forty-six was the first unit to arrive on scene, uh, gave a sign-up to command the incident. And then when Battalion, uh, A arrived on scene, um, due to the fire being underground in an inaccessible portion of those storm control channels, uh, he requested, he upgraded response to a technical rescue combined space response. Um, this is a extremely, uh, what we refer to as a high-risk, low-frequency call, although they are, been a lot more frequent lately. Um, but, uh, you have to be specialized, you have to take specialized training, um, education, certification, and, uh, annual recertification to be able to enter these combined spaces. So, um, it's definitely a, uh, very high-risk incident, because we're going into hot oxygen deficient atmospheres, uh, not to mention down in storm, um, storm drains and channels not made for human occupancy. So, um, they requested a second rescue response, where we have additional units respond out. Um, and they were able to successfully enter the facility, in the storm drain, and extinguish the fire, and also do a primary search to make sure there's nobody considered there. That's just another example of the, uh, incredible resources that, you know, being a large, part of a large, uh, agency like the Orange County Fire Authority, the Orange County Sheriff's Department, that versus having your own municipal fire department that you, uh, these resources are available, uh, to you. I'm also assisting on that incident with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, uh, Man and Fire Department with, uh, traffic control and injury. Um, during the month of January, um, our primary safety messages were focused all around, uh, home assess, home assessment, disaster kits, and safety in the household. Um, we did our social media posts on smoke alarms, uh, we always like to try to recommend, um, changing your smoke alarm, uh, batteries, or at least testing your smoke alarm every month, but also changing your batteries, if you're working the older style, um, smoke alarms with a nine-volt battery. Uh, do that every, uh, six months, and we always recommend utilize a time change, daylight savings, it makes, kind of, the natural time to always remember to change smoke alarm, uh, smoke alarm batteries. Um, additionally, uh, smoking, working smoke alarms has been proven to reduce, uh, the risk of dying in home fires by over fifty percent. So that's why we, uh, certainly, um, hail this message, uh, every year, um, and all the time, every chance we get, because we know, uh, smoke alarms do save lives. Uh, as a reminder, any of our, uh, public safety wires are available on our website at www.ocfa.org. And these are printed in multiple languages and can be utilized by your city, and any of your social media posts, or on your websites as well. Um, I'd like to, uh, take a few moments to highlight some of the, um, upcoming events and current events within the OCFA. Um, usually, the first, uh, quarter of the year is when we're busy with all of our promotional testing. Uh, we just wrapped up our PC promotional process, and out of the, uh, twelve candidates that went into the final phase, uh, four of those were successful, and I'm proud to announce that, um, Battalion Chief Brian Bear will be joining Battalion Ship, uh, Battalion Eight on A ship, uh, here on March eighth. Uh, this will be the first time in, probably, three-plus years that we've had all three shifts with a regular assignment Battalion Chiefs. So I know our other two Battalion Chiefs, uh, Chief Eric Morana and Chief Juan Perez will, uh, welcome him, because they'll be able to take off some of the workload that they've been, uh, taken up with him doing it. So, uh, after March eighth, I'll be sure to bring my, uh, bring Brian to a council meeting to introduce him to all of you who receive his stamp and pin. Um, additionally, we have, um, our fire cap promotion ongoing right now. We have currently seventeen captain candidates in the academy, and they'll be doing their final testing in early March. Uh, we have twenty-three candidates in our, um, engineer promotional process with their final testing wrapping up in March. And currently, we have, uh, fifty recruits in our basic recruit fire academy, which is a sixteen-week process. They started here in February, uh, with the graduation here in upcoming June. We wish all of them the best of luck in their promotional processes. Um, I want to highlight, take a moment to highlight, uh, this, our Spark, Spark Love Toy Drive. Um, so, uh, every December, we, you know, OCFA is a proud partner of Spark Love, with all the other partner agencies. Um, this year, the OCFA, uh, collected and distributed thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty toys to, uh, children for this holiday season. Uh, this was, part of this was being partnered with a hundred and eighty-five businesses and organizations to collect toys for over a hundred and twenty-five nonprofit, um, organizations, community, uh, churches, so forth. So, really a great, uh, successful, uh, Spark Love Toy Drive beginning this year. Um, this February twentieth, the OCFA and the Orange County Sheriff's Department is gonna be hosting our Supporting Heroes on February, uh, Tuesday, February twenty, twenty twenty-four. If any of you find yourselves, uh, or having any excuse to travel down to Rancho Santa Margarita, they're gonna be doing that down to the Wood Ranch, uh, restaurant from five to nine p.m., uh, where a portion of all of your, you'll be served and waited on by Orange County Fire Authority and the Orange County Sheriff's Department, uh, deputies and firefighters. And for a season, all the bills will go towards, uh, the charities for, uh, heroes supporting heroes. And then, uh, lastly, um, we too are having our upcoming open house. Um, so, on, uh, March, Saturday, March sixteenth, from ten a.m. to three p.m., we'll be opening up our, uh, doors at our OCFA headquarters at One Fire Authority Road. Um, this is our annual event, um, that we, uh, like to showcase everything the OCFA has to offer. Um, it's much, goes much more beyond just the fires, fire trucks, it's where we open up our whole facility. Uh, we allow, uh, tourists of our facility, of all the difference, our dispatch center, our, uh, fleet maintenance and training grounds. We also have live, uh, demonstrations of both fire, uh, meth circulation, um, our arson and canine, uh, use our canine are always a big hit, watching them go through the bases, as well as we have, um, engine rides and other, um, activities for our children and families. So I'd like to welcome all of you, uh, your children, your family members, uh, your friends and neighbors, uh, to this event. It's always a, uh, really well-attended event. Um, and like the vector control open house, we will be offering meals. You'll be, uh, served delicious hot dog, uh, chips, uh, and, uh, some snacks cooked up by our very own fire hankers. So I'd like to, uh, welcome all of you, the family and friends, to our open house event. Uh, and there's also a flyer we have that we posted on your, uh, city website, social media, to advertise that as well. Um, this concludes fire report for the Orange County Fire Authority for the month of January, uh, twenty twenty-four, and, uh, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I'm not sure if, if you've done this before, but Zenia has a list of all our local schools. Maybe if we got that list to her, she could get it out to the, um, P I Os in the school district, and then also to the principal's home. Because I know a lot of our kids have been there, and, you know, a chance to be a partner through the afternoon, anything like that. I think that would be a good, you know, the outreach besides just posting it on the website.
No, that'd be great, though. We'll definitely take that. And I know we also have our community and our outreach team, recruiting team at this event as well. So don't be there to answer any questions for these students that want to pursue a career in fire service. And it's beyond just being a firefighter, it's anything in the fire service, it could be a fire dispatcher, uh, our nurse education, our fleet maintenance, our service center training ground, so it's much more beyond just being a firefighter. I think that'd be perfect, thank you.
We had an excellent video on operations today. I'm wondering if you could give that to Heather, and she can get it out to the council. I think, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's on the website, but if she gets it, send it to us and to staff, I think we have a chance to see what's going on, uh, as far as our responses. It's very, it's really good moving. Okay, thank you.
Um, just, I'll give the, uh, operational update, uh, from our P I Os, actually, I'll be able to share that.
Okay, Charlie, I see the chief, come on up. He doesn't know this. As we all know, uh, our chief of police has done such an outstanding job. The short time that he's been here, to be in short time, that he caught the eye of the sheriff, Sheriff Barnes. Sheriff Barnes, believe it or not, has always had his eye on, on the chief. And so, uh, is your new title running Commander?
Yes.
Okay, so it's gonna be Commander, so I'll have to, like, hell, come to chief, when he comes to my attention. But, um, we'll get a chance to give him a, an official goodbye, but I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, he's got a gift, being, I think, he did well with the order, too. Um, you know, we talk about all how to, you know, issue later, but, um, you know, you have done such an outstanding job, and what you do also impacts our surrounding cities. And so, um, just wanted to let everybody know that we're gonna be calling you Commander for these, uh...
Yes, sir.
And, but we still have you to able to go forward.
I'm not gonna go over, but thank you so very much, um, I'm very happy.
I'm not going to go over, but thank you so very much. I'm very humbled. I'm very excited. But I can tell you that I learned a lot about myself being the stand chief, more than I could imagine. And when I was going over my interviews and stuff for this testing process, it was amazing, all the stuff that I learned as the chief of police, I got to bring to that interview. So my advice to all the tenants and captains for the sheriff's department is be a city chief because you're learning so much, not just about law enforcement, but about the community. So like I said, it's been a, it's been a wild ride, but again, I'm very excited. Thank you.
Anyway, congratulations, chief. Okay, let's get a good night's sleep because we have a big day.